Okay, we're calling the East Line Zoning Commission Regular Meeting of January 19th, 2023 to order at 7:30 PM. If you haven't already, could you please silence your cell phones? And I think we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Roll call. Terrence Donovan.
Yeah.
William Dwyer.
Yep.
Terry Granatek is not here. Debbie Jett Harris.
Here.
Norman Pack is not here. Jay Ginsburg is not here. Denise Markowitz.
Yeah.
Dave Schmidt.
Here.
We have Mr. Mahalan, our zoning official, Ms. Hardy, our ex officio, and we have Brooke, our recording secretary. Luckily, we have two alternates tonight to fill in, so thank you. First, we'll have public delegations. Public delegations is the time when members of the public are invited to speak the commission on subject matters that are not on the agenda. Is there anyone here from the public that has anything to speak about? Okay. In that case, I call the public hearing to order for the application of Charles Koch, I hope I pronounced that right, for a special permit for indoor recreation at 170 Flanders Road for Cardio Sport by the Bay, East Lime Assessors Map, 26.3, Lot 11. Mr. Mahalan, was the legal ad run? And was the sign posted?
Yes.
All right. First, we need to read in the zoning memo, then we'll get to the presentation. Ms. Jett Harris is going to be secretary for tonight.
January 19th, 2023, East Line Zoning Commission from William Mahalan. Special permit application, 170 Flanders Road, Midway Plaza, CA Zone, Indoor Recreation. The applicant, Charles Koch, is applying for a special permit to operate his business, Cardio Sport by the Bay, at 170 Flanders Road, also known as Midway Plaza. He will occupy three storefronts, which consist of approximately 3,000 square feet in area. The class area will be 800 square feet. His business model will provide training for current and former athletes in class setting and groups up to 12 people. Classes will not be operated simultaneously. The hours of operation as proposed will be Mondays, Wednesday, and Friday, 8:00 AM to 11:00 AM, and 4:00 PM to 7:00 PM. Tuesday and Thursday, 9:00 AM to 11:00 AM, and 5:00 PM to 7:00 PM. Saturday, 9:00 AM to 11:00 AM. The three storefronts have 12 parking spaces dedicated to them, which should be adequate based on class size.
Thank you. If you could state your name and address for the record, and then proceed. Thank you.
Charles Cook, 108 Hillcrest Road, Niantic, Connecticut, 06357.
If you would, go ahead with your presentation.
Oh, yes. So, as you mentioned in the statement of use, we will be a class-based gym located in the Midway Plaza. Our classes will be run during non-high-traffic times, early in the morning and late in the evening, so we will not disrupt the normal flow of business within them. We will be the first franchise in the state of Connecticut, and we're excited to bring it to the town of Niantic.
Can you elaborate on the activity of the classes?
Yes. So, the concept of the classes is to simulate being in a game-time environment, so there's no set clock or repetitions. It is just all based off of movement, and so it is much a physical workout as it is a mental workout, keeping everyone engaged, head on a swivel, in a high-intensity level to support it with music, so it's choreographed that way as well.
Okay. Does anyone on the commission have any questions?
That doesn't seem like... Oh, man.
You're not running a weight-type gym?
Correct. No, there will be no individual training, no free access. Everything will be scheduled based off of the classes and will be led by one individual coach. So, one class will transpire, that class will end, everyone will clear out, the next class will come in. So, there will be no free rein. There's no heavy-weight equipment. Most of the things we use are sports equipment, soccer balls, tennis balls, things of that nature, cones.
Is a membership involved in this?
Correct. There is a monthly membership associated with it.
Is there going to be music?
Yes. The music will be isolated inside of the box, the 800 square feet, which we're building out, insulating the ceiling, and providing speakers just inside that box, so we do not disrupt the rest of the tenants.
That doesn't seem like very many clients at one time, just 10.
It's hard to keep track of it, 20. I don't know if you've ever coached a team, right? If you're coaching a football team, you've got to keep track of 11 people at a time, so we want to keep it tight so that we can give everyone the attention they need in order to be successful.
Okay. Thank you for telling me.
You talked about the noise. Would there be any vibrations from a group of people jumping up and down, or anything that would bother the neighbors?
Well, so, we're on the ground level, and we're laying a pad, and then we're laying an 8-millimeter turf on top of that.
Okay.
And the exterior floor will be a rolled rubber, also 8 millimeters thick, too, so it should dampen any noise.
No, to me, it fills a good space. No, it's good.
Any other questions? No? Anybody from the public here that wants to speak for, against, anything? No? You want to make a motion to close the hearing?
Oh, I'll make a motion to close the hearing.
I second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Against? I call the next public hearing to order for the application of Niantic Soapy Noble LLC, owner-applicant for a special permit and site plan to redevelop and rebuild the existing car wash facility at property located at 230 Flanders Road, East Lime, East Lime Assessors Map, 26.1, Lot 27. Mr. Mahalan, has the legal notice ad run?
Yes.
Has the sign been posted?
Yes.
Thank you. Now, we'll read an email from Connecticut DEEP.
From Kim Zapella.
Zapla.
What, how do you say?
Zapla.
Zapla. Okay, Zapla. Tuesday, September 27th, 2022, at 11:01 AM to Bill Mahalan. Subject, re-car wash and aquifer. Hi, Bill. The new closed-loop car wash system proposed for the existing site is fine, so long as they get the aquifer protection area registration transferred to them. The new owners need to fill out the APA registration form and certify to best management practices. Thanks, Kim. Kim Zapella, Supervising Environmental Analyst, Water Quality Unit, Water Planning and Management Division, Bureau of Water Protection and Land Reuse, Connecticut Department of Energy and Environmental Protection, 79 Elm Street, Hartford, Connecticut, 06106-5127. Phone is 860-424-3335. Fax is 860-424-4054. Email is kimzapella@ct.gov.
And now, we have the official zoning memo.
January 19th, 2023, to zoning East Line Commission from William Mahalan. Special permit application, 230 Flanders Road, Soapy Noble Car Wash. The applicant, Soapy Noble LLC, Michael Frisbee, is applying for a special permit and site plan approval to develop a car wash at 230 Flanders Road. The site is presently occupied by an existing car wash that has fallen into disrepair. This facility was constructed many years ago under standards that were leading-edge at the time. The applicant is proposing to demolish the existing building and construct a new 3,400 square foot, one-story replacement facility using current technology. The property is zoned CA Commercial and allows car wash by special permit, subject to site plan approval, see Section 8, 8.2, dot, 8.2 and 10, and Section 24 of the zoning regulations. The lot fronts on Flanders Road to the east, Industrial Park Road to the north, and backs up to Wetlands to the west. I note that an inland wetlands permit is required, and permit is pending. The proposed building is a one-story structure consisting of a vehicle tunnel and a mechanical room which houses the wash systems. The site will be regarded to enhance the redesigned and improved drainage system. Travel lanes and entrances have also been redesigned to better improve onsite and offsite traffic movements. Sidewalks will be constructed along Flanders Road and Industrial Park Road. In addition, the Connecticut Department of Transportation will be installing a much-needed signal, signalized crosswalk across Industrial Park Road. Their work is part of the state's Flanders Road Improvement Project and may not be constructed until the end of the project. The applicant's submission package was reviewed by the Town's Land Use Review Team, which consists of the town engineer, town planner, wetlands agent, fire marshal, water and sewer engineer, building engineer, and myself. The team reviewed the proposal and, after revision, signed off on the proposal. I note here, however, that the inland wetland agency has not given final approval as of this writing. As the commission is aware, the zoning board may not grant an approval until the wetlands agency acts. Should the approval be delayed, the zoning commission may continue its public hearing with a condition that the hearing is open only to the, only for the purpose of accepting the wetlands agency decision. In conclusion, the zoning board should carefully evaluate the application and the hearing testimony during its deliberations. Motion to...
We have one more thing to read into the record, the list of exhibits that have been posted online.
Exhibit A, special permit application, Niantic Soapy Noble, 230 Flanders Road. Exhibit B, site plan review, application, Niantic Soapy Noble, 230 Flanders Road. Exhibit C, cover letter narrative, Niantic Soapy Noble, 230 Flanders Road. Exhibit D, proposed Soapy Noble Express Car Wash Site Plans, 230 Flanders Road. Exhibit E, alternate site layout plan, Soapy Noble Car Wash, 230 Flanders Road. Exhibit F, project narrative and stormwater report, Niantic Soapy Noble, 230 Flanders Road. Exhibit G, limited warranty deed, Niantic Soapy Noble, 230 Flanders Road. Exhibit H, a butters list, Niantic Soapy Noble, 230 Flanders Road. Exhibit I, revision narrative of December 2nd, 2022, Niantic Soapy Noble, 230 Flanders Road. Exhibit J, revised December 2nd, 2022, proposed site plan, Niantic Soapy Noble, 230 Flanders Road. Exhibit K, project narrative and stormwater report, Soapy Noble Express, revised December 2nd, 2022. Exhibit L, town engineer staff review, Niantic Soapy Noble, 230 Flanders Road, December 5th, 2022. Exhibit M, public utilities engineer staff review, Niantic Soapy Noble, 230 Flanders Road. Exhibit N, notice to applicant of public hearing, Niantic Soapy Noble, 230 Flanders Road. Exhibit O, town clerk recording and legal publication, Niantic Soapy Noble, 230 Flanders Road.
Thank you.
Could I ask you, could you read the part where it asks for Aquafor Protection Agency? And I didn't hear that listed on my list of exhibits. It would have been in the first...
Thank you. For clarification, it's not an exhibit on this, it was an email to me because I had asked about the Aquafor Protection and whether this system is acceptable under that program. But I was clarifying to my purposes to inform the committee that we removed that.
Okay, so that's going to be read into the record?
Yes. She just read it to three, it's like a two-line...
I'm sorry, I missed it.
Certainly.
I'll find it.
It said in P on this list.
P.
On this list, here in your packet.
P. They added one more.
Oh, it's not on here, though. Okay. It's, it's under P. They added it after the O.
Yeah.
Yep, it wasn't on here. That's okay. State of Connecticut, deep email, aquifer protection zone, 9/27/2022.
Okay, we're good.
And the date for that was 1/18/20... No, never mind. Yeah, 1/18/2023.
Okay. If the presenters can give us your name and address for everyone that's presenting. Thank you.
Sure. So, good evening, members of the commission. For the record, my name is Kevin Solely. I'm a licensed professional engineer in the state of Connecticut with Solely Engineering. With me here this evening is Mike Frisbee from Soapy Noble, and some other members of the team who are here to kind of answer questions about operations, anything the commission may have, but I'm going to run you through the overall presentation we're proposing.
You might want to speak up a little.
Sure.
Thank you.
I will. Sorry about that. I have to say, we're thrown for a little bit of a loop at the wetlands hearing, and we were able to use the presentation board, so I brought a laptop and everything. Luckily, I happen to have an emergency easel in my car and a full set of plans, so we're able to make it work and keep it going. So, you know, just first, obviously, we're, from a housekeeping standpoint, I know was mentioned in the, in the memo from Mr. Mahalan, we haven't received wetlands approval yet. However, we believe that is imminent. We did have a wetlands hearing, and they closed it, and they were moving forward with approval, so we believe, I mean, obviously, we expect this hearing to stay open until the commission can have that in their files, but we think that's, that's imminent, and we look forward to that. So, we're here today to talk about a proposed Soapy Noble Car Wash at 230 Flanders Road. So, again, I just have the full plant set, so I'm going to kind of run through. So, the site's located at the intersection of Industrial Park Road and Flanders Road. So, as the commission's probably very familiar, the site actually is currently improved with an old car wash. Access to that site is provided with, with a driveway from Flanders Road and some driveways from Industrial Park Road. The building is pretty close to the, to the street, and one of the things is because of the age of that facility, there aren't really any stormwater control measures. There's no real protection measures in place to kind of deal with the wash water and things like that. Right now, actually, everything just, when it rains and when someone's cleaning a car, it just runs right off the back of the site towards the wetlands, towards the rear. So, we're really excited because this application is going to really kind of remove something that's, you know, doesn't have a lot of the newest technology in terms of how you can manage and operate a car wash, so we're really excited with what we've been able to prepare and propose to the commission. So, the site itself, or what we're proposing, is a proposed fully automated car wash. It's just under 3,400 square feet. Access to the car wash will be provided via full movement driveway on Industrial Park Road, and when we looked at this, we wanted to make sure that we were able to design something that kind of took a lot of the existing site constraints into consideration. So, we actually proposed to close the existing access off of Flanders Road, which is a great improvement, and we pulled that driveway pretty far back off from the signal at the intersection of Flanders and Industrial Park Road. We do have an egress-only bypass lane, so this is, this is up here, it's up at the end of the car wash, but all customers will come in through the rear entrance, that's furthest away from Flanders. The site has a total of 17 parking spaces. Of that, there's actually 13 vacuum spaces. So, club members will be able to go in, use the vacuums, or go around to the east of the site, excuse me, to the south of the site, and enter into the queue lane for the car wash itself, travel along that property line, and then turn around up by Flanders Road and enter the facility here. If, for some reason, someone got there and didn't want to go for a wash, that's what that bypass is for, so they could kind of skirt out and get out to Industrial Park Road. But if not, everyone else will enter the car wash here, travel away from Flanders, and then leave the car wash here. Then there's, we have the vacuum spaces here, which allow them to kind of stop if they wanted to vacuum their cars, and then continue out to the exit on Industrial Park Road. Just so, regarding the access and our, what we're proposing for Flanders Road, we actually have started the dialogue with the Connecticut Department of Transportation. We've, they're actually very supportive of the project. They really appreciate that we were removing that driveway on Flanders Road and that we were pushing our driveway further back on Industrial Park Road. Also, as part of this, we are proposing sidewalks along the entire frontage of both Industrial Park Road and Flanders Road, so that wraps all the way around the limits of the property and continues all the way down to that bridge on Industrial Park Road. And I know now there's obviously, there's, there's some sidewalks on the opposite side of the street, but this is going to be a great improvement for us on this side to actually add some additional sidewalks. I'm just flipping through some of these plans. I want to get to our grading and drainage plans. So, from a stormwater management standpoint, our site has been designed with a robust stormwater management system. All stormwater is collected and routed through a series of catch basins with deep sumps, and then that water, stormwater, is collected, routed through piping systems, and discharged into a hydrodynamic separator to remove, you know, total suspended solids in accordance with the 2004 Stormwater Quality Manual administered by DEEP. That stormwater, after it's cleaned and treated, is then outletted into an above-ground detention basin. This system has been designed to actually provide some additional attenuation. It'll allow for water to continue to sit, and then additional stuff settle out, and then from there, it'll actually be discharged. It's attenuating those flows to reduce the peak runoff from the site from existing conditions, and then that's outletted into a larger wetland mitigation area, which is being proposed just east of some existing wetlands on the property, which are towards the rear of the site along the, the Patagatset River here. All of our stormwater, again, is collected, it's treated, it's, the flows are attenuated, so we're reducing flows for all storm events. We've been able to work closely with town staff, and I think we have a positive letter from Mr. Close, the town engineer. The, as a point, when I get to the utility plan, all of the, oh, this happens with the easel sometimes. Since all the stormwater is collected, all of the wash water that's inside the facility is completely independent. There's no opportunity for that water to kind of get into the system, and that's actually controlled through a, it's collected, and then it's recirculated through, and recirculated and treated. The majority of that water, 70% of it's actually reused in the wash cycle for future cars, and then whatever isn't is actually discharged into the sanitary sewer system, so it does not go into the stormwater at all. There's no possibility or opportunity for that to get into any of the stormwater system or the wetland resources towards the rear of the site where the rest of the stormwater Included in the packet is a soil erosion sedimentation control plan, which has been designed in accordance with 2002 Soil Erosion Sediment Control Manual, as administered by DEEP. You know, we wanted to make sure that the site was designed both for, kind of in two phases. We wanted to look at the site demolition and make sure that we had proper SEC measures installed to protect against any sediment-laden water from getting into the natural, natural resources around the property, and then obviously during construction. And that includes, you know, silt fence, you know, hay bales, things like that, to make sure that all that construction stormwater runoff is managed in accordance with appropriate From a utility standpoint, we are proposing to, you know, do gas connection off of Industrial Park Road. We're connecting it to an existing sanitary lateral along Flanders Road, water service to the property, electric service to the property. We are, as part of this, as I mentioned, we're installing sidewalks, so we are, you know, making sure that we're looking and taking into consideration all the existing utility poles, but we're able to kind of pull service off of those, off of those existing utilities to minimize the disruption and the impact with the new construction. And then again, from a, from a car wash standpoint, again, and if there are any questions on this, we have some additional people here who can answer some more questions, but the entire system is a, is an enclosed system. So, all that wash water is collected, it's treated, it goes through a series of tanks, and then it recirculates back into the wash, and then again, that bite, that, that, the 30% that isn't recirculated goes into the sanitary sewer system in accordance with, you know, current operation requirements, and I think as was written to the record, this is in accordance with the Aquafor Protection Regulations, and it's deemed acceptable use and practice for what we're proposing. As part of our project, we do have a very robust landscape plan. We wanted to make sure that we were designing a site that's very aesthetically pleasing. We're able to maintain some existing large trees along Industrial Park Road and really supplement and enhance the proposed area where we do have, you know, we're putting on our sidewalk, and we have pretty extensive vegetation proposed along through here and then here as well. We do have, as part of our stormwater detention system, we have a basin planting through there with some seed mixtures, and then we have some mitigation planting within the wetland mitigation area as well, and we'll really try to create something that we think is going to be a great addition to the community. From a lighting standpoint, we do include, we did include a lighting plan. We wanted to ensure that we have, the, all the lighting proposed is dark sky compliant, so they're recessed fixtures, LED, so it reduces glare and ensures that we don't have any light spillage off of our property or into, or into any of the national, natural resources. Let me skip over some of our detail sheets, and we'll go lastly to the architectural. There we go. We'll get those later. So, excuse me. Included in the package, obviously, is architectural elevations. The site is, as we said, the site is, or the building itself is kind of narrow along Flanders Road, extends back down Industrial Park Road. We think it's actually a really great aesthetic. This is actually going to be the fourth location of a Soapy Noble with many more in the works. But I think it's created, you know, it's designed with trying to be sensitive to the context. We have some stone materials along the base, you know, and really kind of created something that's low-profile, but it's really nice from an aesthetic standpoint. So, we think it's a, it'll be a great addition to the community. You know, from an operation standpoint, the car wash is designed to really kind of primarily service passenger vehicles, so it's not for larger box trucks or things like that. I wanted to make sure I mentioned that. We talked about the sidewalks, we talked about the landscaping and lighting, the closed system, you know, as we indicated, we did provide proof of signposting, you know, and I guess with that, we'd be happy to answer any questions the commission may have.
Sure. One quick question on the elevation. Can you show the commission which elevation is going to be in what direction, so which elevation faces the Spaff and Chop, which is the lobby you...
Yep.
...for you, which is the top elevation for, so that you get that orientation.
Sure. So, as you can see, so, this is what faces, ooh, that's to the east elevation. This is towards the rear. If I have that right. Yep. This is the south elevation, so this actually faces opposite from, oh, no, that's not right. Excuse me. This is the south elevation. This is what's going to be facing Industrial Park Road. You know, it's designed to kind of create those windows to, so you can actually kind of look in and see those cars getting washed, and then this is the face, this is the facade that faces the property to the south.
And those are clavords on the south side, which is basically, that says Ford and Madden, which is the vineyards of the farm channel.
That, that's correct, with asphaltic shingles to kind of create that good aesthetic.
Excuse me, sir. Just for some clarification, on the previous drawing that you had there, it showed some vacuums up against that building. Those are being eliminated, is that correct?
Yeah, there's no vacuums proposed along the building.
Nope, nope. Right there. The one right before in front of that one.
This one?
Next. One more. There you go.
Yeah, this was actually, this was actually taken from another location. There are not vacuums proposed along the building, and that's best illustrated on the site plan.
Understood. Just for clarification.
This presentation did not be a mess. That threw me for a loop there.
How does the size of this building compare with the existing?
I think it's, it's slightly larger than existing. You know, the existing, the existing facility that's there, it has kind of self-service bays, so it functions differently. You know, this with, with the new technology and the length of this tunnel, I think, like I said, I think we are a little bit larger in footprint, but from an operation standpoint, it's much more efficient and, and again, self-contained and controlled.
What are your proposed hours?
Seven.
Stand up, stand up, for the record.
So, I'm Matt Hager. I'm the operator for the chain. The proposed hours are 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM every day of the week except Sundays. Sundays, we do 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM, just to limit the hours a little bit.
How many self-serving bays are you proposing?
There are no self-serving bays from a wash standpoint. It's fully automated. There are 13 vacuum spaces.
As I read in the application, those vacuum spaces are, the vacuuming is included?
It is.
For the car wash?
Yes. And then also...
With mat stations?
Yep. Let's talk about the operation.
Yeah, so, depending on the site, we offer two different mat cleaners that we bounce between. One is a actual wet and dry mat cleaner, which is the same level of mat cleaning that you get at a detail... that you get at a detail shop. They're very expensive. We're offering that to free for customers as well. Essentially, you send your mat through once, it wet backs it, you send it through again, and it dries it with the heated dry. The other proposed would be mat beaters, similar to like what you see at the standard car wash around this area, except it would have a vac nozzle attached to it, so it does do a much better job than the, you know, what you tend to see at the gas stations and car washes around the area now. And then the other free additives is, we also have air nozzles for customers to use, and we use a towel cart with a light multi-surface degreaser and free towels as well. So we offer a good amount of additives.
How many employees do you think you're gonna need?
Yeah.
So, depending on how busy the site is, we range from four to six employees plus a manager. We do do assistant managers. Those get split between two sites. So for this specific site, it'd be, you know, the assistant manager would be split between here and then the closest site. And then we always have a manager present, and anytime that we're open, we will have a cashier there, as well as a manager every day from 7:00 AM until 3:00 or 4:00 PM.
So the process is we drive up, we come to a kiosk?
Yep.
What do you arrive at and how do you pay?
So we do offer pay stations. There'll be multiple of them to allow for traffic to really move quickly.
So there's two?
Sure. So you, you pull into the entrance off Industrial Park Road, you go and you get into the queue for the car wash. It's a single line, lane that breaks into two. You then approach two pay stations, and if you're a member, they'll be able to scan you. You'll be able to continue on through the, through the facility. And those are, are the pay stations manned?
The pay stations are not manned, but they're within sight. So we usually will keep a guy staffed out there. No one sits at a pay station for longer than thirty seconds without one of our cashiers going to make sure they don't need help. And then we also offer, which is a big difference from other pay stations, is we have license plate readers, not the stickers on your windshield. So members would be able to just pull up automatically. No one needs to come out and scan their car. They'll just send their car through, which allows us to move cars a bit faster and keep stickers off windshields.
Do you have any plans to have any dumpsters on the property?
Yes, we do have a dumpster towards the rear of the site here, and that's located specifically to kind of ensure that there could be adequate operation without impacting, or, you know, access without impacting operations. It's located here.
I just had one question. You mentioned all the wat, most of the water is self-contained. Have you ever had problems with leaks, or what do you do if something does leak through?
So as of now, we've had no issues with leaks. The way that the system is designed is it's, anything shy of a major earthquake, we're not going to have a leak. They're in large holding tanks outside underground in very thick cement encasements. Anything inside the car wash, obviously, is in the trench, which has the cement outside, and all the pipes run through the cement as well. So anything shy of breaking a couple feet of cement, we're not going to leak any water.
Okay, thank you.
I have a couple of questions. Could you go back to the picture that shows the facade, the front facade of the building, so what people see as they fly by? So that's the actual front?
That's correct. This is down here. This is the front.
Okay.
Yeah.
And Mr. Mahoney, with the new road planes or revision on the road that go by the front of the, has this been taken into consideration in this possibility that the road would be widened?
Yeah, the width of the road is going to, it feathers down from the bridge on 95 on the west side, which is the nearest vicinity. The very, at the edge, at the end of Industrial Park Road and Flanders Road, next to Stop and Shop, it's going to feather down to zero. So the widening is really on the north end of the Stop and Shop, and then it feathers down, and we're in discussion about how to get the line to freeze down and that's also discussed. That widening stops before it hits here. One of the things that happened to the project, we called them, oh, we don't have any money, they called them back, and they were able to find some money, and we were sort of in a no-site, and so they're going to, you literally cannot cross that end spot.
And to that point, the existing building is actually approximately twenty-one feet away from the property line, and this proposal actually brings that back. We're thirty-two feet away from the front property lines.
Can you tell me about the cleaners that you're going to be using, specifically like for the soaps, for the washing and soap?
Yeah, so we use all Simonize Chemical, which is a company that's right out of Connecticut. We, you use what's called a hyper-concentrate. So we get them in smaller containers opposed to them being watered down. It eliminates the risk of spilling them during transit and whatnot, as well as less storage of chemicals. It's all your basic car wash. It's degreasers, hot wax, we have a ceramic treatment. Nothing that we use is like a high-risk chemical. We don't use anything overly corrosive. We don't have anything that's an overly environmental hazard. Nothing that we use is something that you'd be scared to put into a sewer system, essentially. And I do have SDS sheets on every chemical provided there at every car wash that we operate. So if that was something that you guys needed to see, I could provide that to you.
All of those SDSs were actually included and provided to the Wetlands Commission as well. We had the same discussion. They had a lot of questions about products we were going to be using and ensuring that they wouldn't cause any adverse impact to the environment.
And then, I'm sorry. All these are still, they're in that closed system-
That's correct.
And they're rinsed. It's filtered water, so when it comes back out, it's clean again. So then, what happens with all the contaminated?
So that goes into the sewer system?
Alright, so it's all cleaned up, basically, and it all-
Correct.
Discharged.
That's correct.
Thank you.
So just, the water reclaim system is abundantly complicated. In its simplest form, it's essentially a few thousand gallons apiece tanks, and there's three of them outside. There's multiple sediment tanks, there's ozone getting dropped into it. And the way that the tanks work is that it pulls the water from the middle of the tank. So the oils, things like that, float to the top, the sediment sits at the bottom. We get those tanks pumped out. So all of the heavy stuff aside from the water, or any of the highly, you know, the chemicals from the soaps and stuff, that all gets pumped out from us. It doesn't get returned back into your sewer. You're getting the processed water. Yeah, so where the water gets returned back to town is at the cleanest stage of the water reclaim system, and then from there, it also goes through an oil-water separator.
Mr. Mahoney, shouldn't this have come before the board, the Aquafor Protection Board itself?
Yes and no.
Well, just give me the yes.
And that's why I contacted DEP, so, and asked them to take a look and send me an email saying they were comfortable as they are. So there's a registration existing, an Aquafor Business Registration existing on the site. It's got to be transferred, or we'll do a new one and have registration. It's what you approve every so often, based on the expiration of that system. So that eventually will come back to you, and then we have an operations schedule that we ask for anyway, and that DEP asks for, well, we have it, and they had submitted it, and we ask for that as a matter of course on everything that we do. So you will eventually see it, but it's, remember, it's just a registration and you're approving this. And so this is an existing site, it's an existing car wash. So they'll pass that registration on, and then when it expires, they'll be back to you to re-register through the Aquafor Board, not the zone. So-
Oh, that's, that's what I was all about.
You will eventually see a, a, when the inspection is required, they will receive.
Alright, thank you.
We have just, we should push all the dry, is this the type of car wash that the driver of the vehicle will remain in the car as it passes through, and any passengers remain in the vehicle as well?
That's correct.
So everyone stays in the vehicle.
So there's no waiting room facility or anything?
Uh, no. So we do have a small storefront. We have a couple of chairs. It's not a waiting room. There's no need for a waiting room. To be completely honest with you, it's mostly used for the kids. You just watch them all, watch them all back in the yard at night. Aside from that, yeah. So we do have a place to sit, you know, if you have a lot of your car or something, but we don't need waiting rooms. Vehicles stay, or people stay within their vehicles, cycle through, vacuum out their own car, use all the, these three accessories on their own, and then they're, they're all out.
And how long are processes going to be each time?
So the average length of the car wash will be around two minutes. We can process four cars at a time, so we can do about a hundred and twenty cars an hour. That's it. The car every thirty seconds, but the actual time that you would sit in the car as a customer in those two minutes.
Any other questions?
No.
Okay. Before we move on, we need to read one more exhibit into the record. I gave the secretary a list I printed out before they added this, so could we do that now?
It's just Q, right?
No, the last one, yeah.
Yeah, Q. Okay, so the zoning application, Niantic Soapy Noble Car Wash, updated 1/19/2023. We went through to Q, that, we went to P, but they added a Q, which is signposting, and that was dated 1/18/2023.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that was in there.
So we're going to just, so, I see, we are regediting, and we're sitting here and regediting, so we'll break that one.
Well, these are, if we're required to do that, sure, yes. I'll, I'll put them back together and, and put a rubber band around them, but, but-
I do believe you already have them submitted.
We have, yes. So these are the same plans that are currently on, on record.
Yeah, I have them here.
Correct.
No revisions, no revisions. Exactly what, you know, and, yeah.
But as noted-
I'm happy to pick them up and put them together.
The vacuums shown on that drawing are not-
No.
Applicable?
No.
As noted, yeah.
I do have one question. You show two different scenarios for the vacuum station, the ones that are opposite each other, and then the vacuum configuration that's just a straight line.
So this is what we're proposing. We're proposing vacuums on both sides of the egress lane from the car wash, seven to the, to the north, closest to Stop and Shop, and then six to the south. And we also have, obviously, just to satisfy ADA requirements, we have an ADA parking space there as well.
Well, just in our packet, there was another proposal for a different configuration for the vacuums.
Yeah, this is, this is what we're currently proposing. Yes. And I think this should be consistent on most of our drawings. All of our drawings, except for the one architectural one that we didn't put there.
Where do your employees park?
Well, we have additional spaces down to the southern end as well, next to the dumpster, till, you know, to, so those can be kind of separate from customer parking.
Just curious, how many cars an hour can go through an operation like that?
I think a hundred and twenty, right?
Yeah, so, we can actually process just shy of two hundred cars an hour. As an operator, we'll never do more than a hundred and twenty cars an hour. Anything above a hundred and twenty cars an hour, you start to sacrifice the quality of the car wash, because you're putting people through too quick to get the chemical applications and whatnot.
Any plans on accepting trucks at some point in time? Just curious.
Depending on what you need on a truck.
Well, pickup trucks, SUVs, it's certainly sized to accommodate those. It's just not larger, you know, tractor trailers or anything like that.
Any, any truck on there?
So, utility body?
Anything under seven foot two can go in this for that.
Yeah.
So we can even do vans and things. We just can't do the Sprinter vans with the extra coffee songs like the Amazon van. But we can do your standard vans. We can do, we have, you know, Ford F-350s that come through, and they're completely fine, things like that.
Where are you in operation now? Out of curiosity.
East Windsor, Connecticut, and then Feeding Hills, Massachusetts, which is in Agawam.
Okay. Any other questions?
Is this drawn, and wanted for the motion?
I'm, I was going to see if there was anyone from the public here that had any comments? No?
So, on the motion, which I just read, should it be added to the motion, subject to a conclusion of whatever's pending for review?
That's what we plan to move.
That's, that's in here.
Mm-hmm. Yes.
I move to continue the public hearing for the sole purpose of receiving the Wetland Agency's decision.
I second that.
We have a second. Everyone in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Abstain? It passed six zero zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Clean up my mess.
It was actually a good presentation.
It's all on there, right?
Thank you.
Nice.
Okay. We'll give him a minute.
Swing Mike, he's one of the people.
Moving on to the regular meeting, we'll call that to order. We have an application of Charles Cook for a special permit for indoor recreation at 170 Flanders Road for Cardio Sport by the Bay, East Line Assessors Map 26.3, Lot 11. Do we have any comments, any discussion, a motion?
I think it's a good, it's a good business for the area.
I like it.
Minimal impact, it seems like.
Mm-hmm. And plenty of parking.
Especially after they finish fixing the fire damage, they get all that stuff out there.
Yes.
So, application of Charles, how do you pronounce your last name? I want to pronounce it correctly.
Cook.
Cook, okay. Application of Charles Cook for a special permit for indoor recreation at 170 Flanders Road for Cardio Sport by the Bay, East Line Assessors Map 26.3, Lot 11. I make a motion to approve?
Approve that.
You second?
I approve. Second.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Abstain? It passed six zero zero. Thank you. We will skip Soapy Noble as it has been continued. So we will move on to the approval of the minutes of January 5th, if you want to take a couple minutes to look them over.
I have a correction.
Okay. We have one correction here.
Okay. I have a correction that I need to make, but I don't know, it's like copied out here. I can't really see it. So it says, the correction is, Mrs. Jett Harris said she would like to revisit the earlier topic. She said when she was reading the charter, I misspoke. It should have been bylaws. It says that they're supposed to pick a chairman by December 31st, which it says in December. The bylaws state that. So I need that corrected. December 31st, it should be December. And instead of saying charter, it should read bylaws, which is why, and that's, I need to, I, that's, I need to make that correction.
They're lengthy, so we'll take a couple more minutes. Does anyone want to make a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
Did you want to approve it with the correction, or have the-
With the correction.
With the correction.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? I believe it passed six zero zero.
For easy.
Old business. Mr. Mahoney, could we have an update on the architectural design review? And the-
Okay, we'll figure it out real soon. And, um, the whole committee, they made a question just yesterday, and so that's moving on, and then they expect to have something in the next minute.
All right. Thank you. New business. Any business on the floor?
Yes, Madam Chair. Yes, Madam Chair.
Mr. Donovan?
Last meeting, we, actually, after last meeting, we were all, um, emailed a copy of our bylaws. That was submitted to the Town Clerk office. According to our bylaws, we must vote on these and have an effective date, which would be immediately after they're voted on. And to my knowledge, the last bylaws that were voted on were back in two thousand and eight. The ones that I found were from two thousand and ten and they were not, from what I understand, is those were drafted up to go through and find some, like, there's small clerical errors in there. So in our bylaws, there are some small clerical errors. What I would like to make a motion, that the commission accept these bylaws as presented. So that we can have a, a legal record on file, according to our bylaws, with the Town Clerk.
We have a motion on the floor? And we have a second, is there a discussion?
It's already been seconded.
Yes. Is there a discussion? No, hold on.
No discussion, does staff have any information on this?
Well, we do need to find out where the typos are.
There are, you know, just minor things in there that can be addressed. If the chair chooses to form a subcommittee to go through here and basically quote-unquote proofread them. I did find a few in here myself upon looking at them last time. There are certain phrases in here that need to be addressed, such as, you know, all memories shall be mailed, agendas, stuff like that.
Do you want to put that on the agenda for next meeting and maybe present the corrections you think they need?
Madam Chair, that is up to you.
Does anybody have an opinion?
Sounds like, um, I'm, maybe we should all take a look at them and see what needs to be corrected and then bring it up again at the next meeting.
Yeah, I don't, I don't personally think we need a subcommittee, but why don't we all look at them and go over and put that on the agenda for next meeting? If that's some.
We all have copies of the meeting.
If that, if that is the case, to where next meeting, we have it on our agenda, to where that we can present our findings. And then vote on that amended agenda to make it a legal binding bylaw statute, you may say, for the town. Then I will withdraw my motion. But if we feel that it's going to take a while, I would like to get something legally on the record with the town.
I don't see any problem with having it on the agenda, if we all go over it and look for any typos, any mistakes, I think that's fine.
In that case, Madam Chair, I will, will withdraw my motion.
Okay, so we'll have that on the agenda for next time. Zoning official?
I can't hear you though, I'm sorry.
I thought the Soapy Noble crew did a very, presentation, very thorough. We know some groups are more thorough than others.
It was really hard to say Soapy Noble, all those many times.
And just, your reputation, seven-year-old daughter named Soapy Noble.
Oh, that's awesome.
That was really hard to say.
I think their, their building, Soapy Noble's building is looking good out on the highway. Okay, um, our ex officio.
I'll follow Mr. Mahoney's lead and make this brief also. Uh, from the most recent meeting of the Board of Selectmen, we, uh, are continuing to review, uh, the ethics policy for town employees. And, uh, as soon as this is finished, then as new hires come in, they will be required to sign and acknowledge the ethics policy. Which also includes that, uh, there may be no gifts, there may be no gifts accepted that are greater than twenty-five dollars. So we, we're still working on the upgrade of that. The, uh, energy efficient, the EV charging stations, we had hoped to have four of those. And, uh, it's much more expensive than we thought it was going to be, so we're going to have to reduce that to two. And it's still kind of reviewing exactly where those would be located. And how much the town would recoup from the cost of that, they are going to be very expensive. I don't know if Mr. McCollum has, has any further information on that?
I have a comment on that, there's a new state statute that's going to require helpers to put them in. And we'll be coming soon enough with an attachment to add that to our cycle, just to mimic the state statute. So going forward, the state is going to put that, uh, program as well, so we'll see some of that.
We had a report from the subgroup of, uh, Natural Resources Commission. Uh, they've been working on sustainability in some conjunction with inland wetlands. Uh, they present, they recently received a bronze award from the state. I have a list of the number of pro, product, proj, projects that we received credit for to achieve bronze status. And a result of those projects, the town got seventy-seven thousand, seventy-four thousand dollars in, so to speak, rebates. And I have a total list of those projects, if anybody would be interested. But I find the most amazing thing is that, um, all of this was done by volunteers. The Commission of Natural Resources spearheaded that, but a total of twenty projects with hundreds of hours of volunteers in this town. And I think that's why East Lime is a great little town. And then, uh, we, uh, did have another, an additional executive session regarding real estate. And the transaction of the East Lime Land Trust from Oswego Gachi Hills and the Hathaway Farms property. And we are still seeking additional legal documents before making a decision. We also, uh, had a steep grant, which will allow for improvements to the transfer station, including a vehicle state, vehicle scale and a scale house. And I think that, uh, that's it for the last meeting in summation, happy to answer any questions. Okay, let's call it a night.
Well, just one, a couple more things, thank you. Um, I think the next planning meeting would be Mr. Donovan?
Correct. His past one was canceled, the new one's on the twenty-fifth.
Okay, thank you, and I just have one thing. Um, you might want to mark March eleventh on your calendar for save the date. And if you don't remember, I'll read this, um, there's a statutory requirement for municipal land use officials to take training on land use laws and issues. Beginning in January twenty twenty-three. The rule is that for a commission member serving as of one-one twenty twenty-three, they must complete four hours of training prior to one-one twenty twenty-four. And then every other year thereafter. For commission members starting service after one-one twenty twenty-three, they must complete four hours, not later than one year after taking office. Then every other year thereafter. So I understand there's something on March eleventh that they will send more information, but if you want to save that date, you could get your four hours of training done March eleventh. Um, I don't believe we need to register until mid-February, but they'll have more information coming.
Is that at UConn at the Land Used Academy?
I.
No, this is, uh, this is the, um, Connecticut Association of Attorneys, I forgot the actual.
Is this Zoom?
It is Connecticut Bar Association, Saturday, March eleventh, two thousand twenty-three. Nine AM to four-thirty PM, it is a webinar, so you can do it from home.
Is that the same thing as Zoom, Terry?
No. Well, it's similar, but no.
Similar, but, yeah.
It's Zoom, but can't, you also come in person?
Yeah, and they may run it here.
Yeah.
So that we can collectively come to this, pay the forty-five dollars, but the town's going to pay for that.
Okay, so that's March eleventh.
Pay for it, and then in March eleven, um, and you'll stay.
Usually a webinar's the one way, it's done directly.
Waiting on authorization to start getting the authorization.
Nine to four-thirty, March eleventh.
More information to come. So I think that's all we have tonight. Meeting adjourned. Who wants to make a motion to adjourn?
Go move the motion. Second.
Everyone say aye that wants to adjourn?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.